All right, well, welcome everybody to the Iowa City City Council work session for August 18. And we have a few items on our work session agenda today. And I wanted to start with some storm updates. I know that this has been a hard time for many people in our, throughout our state. So wanted to maybe have Jeff jump in and kind of give us some updates on what's happening. And I also can jump in after that.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll be brief tonight with, with our remarks. But hopefully be able to answer any questions that you have about the city's response this past week and looking ahead. Jason Havel, our city engineer is going to kick things off and then he's going to turn it over to Julie Seidel Johnson in our Parks Department to give you their perspective as well. So Jason, it's all yours.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just going to give you a quick update on the storm and then the city's response, especially from the public work side of things. So as you all were, on Monday, August 10th, we had a derecho storm event here in Iowa City, which was a first for a lot of people, myself included. So it was obviously a severe weather event, left damage and debris throughout the city. Tremendous amount of tree damage. And with that, those falling trees often impacting other structures, whether it's homes, garages, power lines, you name it. It was a widespread storm at winds in the neighborhood of about 70 to 80 miles an hour in the Iowa City area. The most significant damage was located east of Iowa River. And it was really in the area kind of bordered by Dodge Street on the west, Rochester on the north, Highway six on the south, and then Scott Boulevard on the east side. So that seemed to be the area of the heaviest amount of damage. Most of our facilities were without line power. At some point, that included the water supply and treatment facilities as well as the collection and treatment facilities on the wastewater side of things. Following the storm, city crews were deployed immediately after the storm leaving the city. Our initial focus was to get streets open. And obviously, that's important for emergency response from utility companies, public safety, as well as city staff. Most of the streets were open by the end of the day Monday. There were some streets that remained closed. A lot of those locations were areas where we had electrical lines wrapped up in tree debris. And so it just, we weren't able to get in there safely until that, those electrical facilities were removed from the debris. So those were, remain closed. Also, on Monday, we focused on getting power to our critical infrastructure. On Monday, we had both our water plant and our wastewater plant were on generator power. In addition, the peninsula well field, which is a critical piece of our ability to generate water, was without power. With that, water staff had begun the process of securing a generator to help energize the peninsula well field again, just due to the importance of that area. And worked with Mid-American to basically make that a priority. And by Monday at midnight, they were able to have that power restored. So obviously, that was a huge sigh of relief to, to keep it from becoming a more significant issue. And along those lines, by end of the day Thursday, we were able to get all of our critical infrastructure back online power. So all of our water and wastewater facilities. Starting on Tuesday, we began with debris pickup and removal, which has continued all last week through the weekend and still continues. I think our estimate right now is we're probably looking at about two months of debris pickup and removal that we're going to be working through that process. We're looking at doing a similar rotation to what we do for leaf pickup. So we'll kind of work our way through the city and the different zones, again, kind of picking up the debris as we go. We organized crews last week during the weekend, so Saturday and Sunday shifts, in addition to the weekday shifts. It sounds like we're going to look at doing that again this weekend. So again, continuing to get that debris picked up. The storm debris, we're taking that to various locations throughout the city or city staff, the stuff that we pick up. We're taking that down to Miss Waki Park. It's an area that is fenced in and we can kind of organize it there and hold it there until we're ready to deal with it. Commercial haulers are required to haul to the landfill. Residential, residential customers can also, or users can also take stuff to the landfill. But we've also opened another debris drop off site and that's located near the transit facility. That's down there at 1200 South Riverside Drive. So that's where the snow storage typically occurs. And so we're using that for people to come and drop off debris there and we'll chip it once we've collected it there as well. And that basically, the thought there is that allows residents to drop it off a little closer to home, not have to go all the way out to the landfill to do that. And I believe, schedule wise, we're looking at having that remain open at least through the end of the month. As with any event this size, Dave Wilson and his staff at Johnson County Emergency Management has been critical. They've been very helpful in helping us to locate and acquire equipment and other resources for the recovery efforts. They were able to provide generators, which a lot of those were used for traffic signals. You may have been driving around and seen a lot of those were completely dark. So those generators came in handy to, to focus on our key intersections and at least get those operational again. In addition, he was also able to help coordinate with Iowa DOT and Johnson County Secondary Roads to help get additional staff and equipment. Especially on the trucking side of things has been a huge benefit. So definitely a big thank you to DOT and Johnson County for the help there. Mid-American Energy obviously has been a crucial partner through all of this. You know, special thank you to Kevin Witty and Carrie Liza. I hope I'm saying her name right, but they've definitely been instrumental, as well as all of Mid-Am staff and, and helping us to work through things and, and to deal with their facilities, but also help to deal with ours and, and really get those critical infrastructure pieces back online quickly. We were, again, were able to, to get arterial streets open right away. Critical infrastructure and most of our signals were, were back by Friday. I think the last signal was back online power by Saturday, so less than a week after the event. Again, a big thank you to them. We continue to work with Mid-American as we come across debris, especially those locations where they have power lines or other electrical components wrapped up in the debris. I think we're good on our major streets, but there's probably still some pockets where we may find those, those locations where that's occurring. I think overall, we're proud of the, the response that's taken place and all the coordination with staff and other entities. But we do ask folks to be patient. Again, we're, we're looking at probably a couple of months still of debris pickup and working through this. As we get a little further from the event, I, I think it's going to be more challenging for people to be patient as we, we work through it. There's just, there's a lot out there and we're working through it as best we can. But moving forward, we'll look, we'll continue to assess the situation and coordinate that debris pickup and, and eventually chipping of the debris as we work through that. So that's all I had, but certainly can turn it over to Julie or answer questions as, as needed.
So I'll take over for parks. We were pretty lucky throughout the parks as far, as far as structural damage. We lost the brand new ball field backstop at Creekside Park and a few other fences here and there, but didn't sustain a lot of damage beyond the tree damage. The tree damage, of course, has been very substantial. The first few days after the storm, our crews were assisting public works with getting streets and critical infrastructure cleared and open. Our forestry crews had been up in the bucket truck a lot, getting any of the street trees that have fallen on property, meaning structures, houses, cars, helping getting those cleared. And our parks crews were able to move out into the parks, starting on Thursday, to start clearing trails and looking for hazards throughout the parks. We found significant hazards over a number of trails, playground areas, active use areas in the parks. So they've been very busy clearing those because with COVID, our park use and outdoor uses remain strong through this entire time. We estimate we have about a dozen parks that are still affected that we still need to address. But we've gotten through about two thirds of the parks and gotten the safety issues cleared out. You'll notice lots of logs and downed trees still, and we will get back to get those later. The cemetery took extensive damage throughout due to the number of very large mature trees. They've cleared areas as needed for various funerals that have happened since the storm. But they will have several weeks more of pickup and, and damage repair at the cemetery. We estimate park crews have at least two weeks more of clearing hangars from trails and park use areas. And in general, you know, we're getting things back online. It's several questions about Fair Meadows splash pad. People were concerned that it was closed off for construction and wouldn't be back on. That was simply because of the electrical outage due to the storm and it should be back up and running. And we're doing our best to keep things going as, as normally as possible as we get back into operations. I think that's it for parks at this time.
Thanks to you both for your updates. Council discussion or any comments by councilors?
I just had a question maybe for Jason. If the debris pickup is continuing for a couple of months, can you anticipate how that's going to impact normal leaf pickup that would be happening into that time?
I think right now, we're anticipating it would essentially probably just roll over from debris pickup into, to leaf pickup. I think timing wise, it, it should work out pretty well, knock on wood. Hopefully, that's the, the plan anyway, but I, I think we're probably looking at something along those lines.
I'd just like to say thanks to staff. I mean, our staff was out there very quickly. Ashley did a great job with department heads of getting things organized. I joked with Jeff this morning that when he started as city manager, as assistant city manager here, I think there were maybe half, I'm not sure, as many as half a dozen times that city manager Tom Marcus left town and we had a disaster like a fire out at the landfill. So we were joking that he left town on vacation and Ashley got the derecho. So, but no, everybody did a great job and just really appreciate all the hard work and extra time that people have been putting in.
I echo what Susan said and the thanks to city staff, as well as all the linemen and the tree crews who've been, worked diligently to, to get the power back and clear debris. And, and also the neighborhoods. It was just amazing to see on social media, the number of folks that rallied to help one another out and helping to clear their neighbors debris and, and that. And that was just amazing to see, but that's, that's Iowa City Strong for you.
Would like to thank the staff, starting with Ashley as well. I was really, I thought that the, the response and the, how nimble staff was and, and the, and communications and the ability to think of new and different ways to allow people to dispose of their refuse, handout bags, find collection areas for refuse was, I was, I thought it was really impressive. Also, you know, although people, some people were without power for nearly a week. I know it takes a long time to get that back up sometime, the critical infrastructure. I hope people are aware that this is, this is an enormous event that's spread over multiple states. And while we had help from linemen from, from out of town, out of state, and even from Ontario, Canada, it just takes a while. And by comparison, I was, I went up to Cedar Rapids on Saturday and Sunday to help out with some things. We, we took a very glancing blow. If anybody has time or, or money to help, they really need it, as do some other communities.
I'll definitely echo many of the things that have been said so far. One question that, for staff, get this from people in relates to the, the yard or the debris on their street. Is there a type of plan? And based on know that it was mentioned at one point, it could happen when regular garbage pickup is placed? Is there a general thought test on when the debris will be picked? If it's at residential homes where we service their gin landfill or kind of yard waste?
I can, I can take that, Mayor. So you're, you're talking just the, the debris that's piled up on the? Yeah, that's, you know, we're going by leaf zones and we're trying to hit the hardest areas first. So it's, it's probably going to be, you know, a good several days to get through one leaf zone, at least this first initial pass. And maybe even five, six days to get, get through a leaf zone, I would, I would guess. So it, it could be a little while for us to get in front of, in front of everybody's house. And of course, those people that we're serving right now, they're still going to have stuff coming out to the curb. You know, as they get a chance to work on things or can have contractors come in. So they might have to have that second round of stuff sitting for several weeks in front of their house. So as Jason mentioned, it's going to take probably a good two months to get everything, everything cleared out. And we'll continue to work as much as we can. It sounds like we've got some plans for some overtime crews this weekend, at least get through the first pass as quick as, as quick as we can. One of the challenging things about this, about the storm, it was so widespread is all of our staff have, you know, impacts at their, their homes and their families' homes too. So we have to find that balance of, you know, asking them to come in extra hours and working extra hours versus allowing them to do what they need to do at their properties as well. So we'll be able to give you updates, you know, on a weekly basis or as frequently as, as you wish. But it's going to take, for some homeowners that just happen to be in a different leaf zone area than we're in right now, it'll be, it'll be several weeks.
Right. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, I just wanted to direct people to the city website at icgov.org. Right in the middle on, in the news updates, there's a link to the disaster recovery page. And on there, there's information about assistance for replacing food. If, if you were receiving food assistance, there are state grants that are available with links to that assistance, links to Iowa Legal Aid, United Way, and those, a variety of programs that can help people out if they themselves need help or if they know of anyone who needs help. And the updates as well, including like the debris pickup in different places that, that Jason was referencing. All that information is available in one spot there too.
Great. And that is at icgov.org/stormrecovery. So thank you. All right. Well, thanks to everyone in our community that have been helping their neighbors, helping themselves because it was quite the, the undertaken from the storm. And even for everyone who have reached out to other parts of the community or even came to our community, thank you. I was able to talk to our assistant city manager minutes, who actually was still during the storm because we were planning to meet up for a community connection that on census that we couldn't do. And so we immediately did see some of the devastation that was happening within the community. It went all longer than I ever anticipated. And so thanks to everybody and all the staff for all they're doing during this time. All right, we're going to go on to the next item on our agenda.
Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. I just got a note that we're, we're not streaming on Channel four right now. So would you mind if we take a, a couple of minutes break? We just need to make sure the public's able to.
Absolutely.
And hearing this conversation. So if we can just take a couple of minutes, I'll, I'll report back quickly. Okay, Mayor, we have the YouTube link up as well. So we're, we're streaming on Channel four on YouTube. It's available on channel, City Channel four and on TVs. And then the phone number is also posted on our social media sites if folks want to call in. So I think we're good to restart the work session if you're ready.
All right, thanks to all the staff working really quickly to get us up and running again. And sorry to the community that we're having some challenges. That's kind of in the way of the world, I think, with, with many things around here lately. All right, we're going to continue our work session on August 18th with the next agenda item, which is COVID-19. We want to maybe have some updates there. And just get some council thoughts as well.
Mayor, I don't have any updates for the council. Happy to answer questions that you have, but we just keep this on the agenda in case there's any, any discussions that council wants to have related to COVID or any questions you have of staff.
I would just make a couple of comments about the uncertainty of our future. I don't know if people have seen that the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill shut down today. They brought students back and started class about a week ago. They've had, I think, at least four cluster outbreaks. And as of today, sometime today, they shut down. They're sending all their undergraduates home as coronavirus has spread across the campus. Additionally, it came out, I believe, yesterday in the news that all of the state of Iowa reporting out of the Iowa Department of Public Health has been incorrect for quite some time. They have been backdating positive tests for people who had been previously tested negative and then later tested positive. They put the date of those positive tests to the date of the original negative test, which means once they finally get that corrected, the trajectory of our infections is potentially going to be significantly steeper on the upside. And the positivity rate is going to be higher. I don't know how much higher. You can actually think, I can't think of her name. It's a nurse practitioner from Iowa City who actually dug into this data and found it. There's another woman out of Ames who is providing an incredible service online with digging into the state data. And she had suspected this for quite some time as well. Iowa Department of Public Health actually confirmed it publicly yesterday. And the news media has been reporting this. So this is worse than people thought. And I think as we start seeing universities like, you know, UNC at Chapel Hill trying to do, trying to reopen, and they were doing a lot of online stuff. What everybody is finding is you bring these college kids, and it's not just going to be the college kids, I'm afraid, back. And no matter what you tell them, you know, there's a lot of them there, you know, we probably all were at that age too. We think we're invincible and they're going to do what they're going to do and this is going to spread. So we, I don't think we have happy times in front of us for a while.
I think I, I just want to add to that. And what I'm seeing up on the north side is some evidence of partying in large groups. And so, you know, one question I would have to staff would be, is there a plan for enforcement? I know that some colleges and universities have kind of a code of conduct that students have to sign before, you know, class begins. And there are, and on some of them, I was looking at Drake's today, Drake University. It covers both on and off campus behavior. And so one of the questions in my mind would be, what if any enforcement the city will be taking? Should we see, you know, behaviors which, you know, could create, you know, some problems with respect to the infection rate?
I, I agree with that, John. I think it's something that we really need to seriously consider. I think we've heard some rumors out there. I think maybe you've heard some folks email you about possibly closing the bars at 10 o'clock. But of course, and that pushes the, the folks into the, the homes, apartments, et cetera, to party. But we had a very alarming number today, a 44 increase in the numbers in Johnson County of positive tests. That's very alarming. We've been doing, you know, been lower 10, 11, 12, but today's was 44. And, and that sets up some red flags. And I think we really need to look at this and the naysayers out there, this is very real. And it's, it's scary. And we need, we need to do something.
I've been in conversation, I've been in conversation with people over the, over the past week, a little bit about mask, concerns with the bars at night. And one of the things that I'm hoping to do is the partnership with alcohol and safety that I'm, that I'm appointed to as mayor, to reconvene that meeting, just to have some conversations there. To see what can we do? You know, just continue the thought processes there. The one question is about enforcement here. And I think that if there is a call that comes in from the community about a disturbance call, disorderly household conduct, I believe our officers will continue to do what they've done in the past. They go and they try to disperse, would be the hope, would be to disperse. And then, you know, certainly if the, if the initial response would be to cite, then, then they get cited. I think right now, when it comes down to COVID and the safety of everyone, I, I think that's something that we have to consider. Most people will say that young people, you know, they, they've been not showing major illnesses because of the COVID-19. And I think as a general group, that is true, but it, you know, only the loss of one life is too many. And, and also the possibility of giving it to other individuals within our community, which we have, I don't know what the average age, age of our community is, but we do have a very active and gray part of our community that is out and about. And the, the chance of them being exposed to coronavirus, of course, the more cases you have, you know, that, that rate increase goes up, even when you're doing all the right things. You know, there's always that chance that a person can be infected with COVID. So I do believe that right now, we have to have more serious conversations about what does it look like? We do know that the, and Jeff, you're going to have to help me with the, the name of the entity that came from Des Moines, the Alcohol Beverage and?
Alcohol Beverage Division.
Divisions. Yeah, they did come from Des Moines and not exactly sure what their end game is. But I know that their, their, their whole point for coming was to assess, to see how the bar scenes were doing essentially. And to my knowledge, there was no, at least no follow up here with the city. So not exactly sure what they plan to do if there are major concerns with how activity is being had in establishments. But I, I really do believe that we have to ensure somehow that we can increase the message because I think that's important, working with the university to make sure that they, you know, they, they're sharing the message. Maybe there's some more outlets that we can do throughout the community through signs that talks about the mask mandate. I know Corvillo has a sign and because I, one, one of the things we want to make sure is that people are aware of, of the mask mandate, as well as some reminders when they're going throughout their day.
Yep, we have a mask mandate, as does Johnson County. And it's really, wearing some kind of face covering is really the only effective way unless you're going to stay home to break the chain of transmission. So at the risk of sounding like Smokey Bear, students only, you can prevent the spread of COVID. I know that you want to hug your friends and have parties with people you haven't seen for months because you're in college. I know you want to have social gatherings and parties, but this whole community is counting on you to act responsibly. Please wear your face covering. If you're a sports enthusiast, you already don't have a football season. Let's not blow the basketball season. Please be good to others and be selfish, protect yourself and others. Thank you.
And Janice also stressed the maintaining the social distance because you don't necessarily, that's, they've, they've heard that, that when they're outdoors, they don't necessarily need the mask, but then it's still vitally important. I stopped in to see the new Target store this weekend. And everybody was very good about wearing their masks inside, but as soon as they left the store, the mask came off and six or seven of them walking side by side on the sidewalks downtown. So we've, we've got to stress that also because that's also vitally important.
I also, as, on the weekend, I was at downtown with my children. And I also seeing like people, you know, walking together in a big group or standing without like having masks on. And there is no social distance, but some people, of course, not all of them, but there is many groups that are not really serious about it. And I'm, yes, that's, so make me think, okay. And I'm, yes, that's what make me think, okay, when this, all the student come back, if now we don't have a lot of students down, but still we see some people are not really doing it. And they are in public. I understand that you were sitting on the restaurant table with your close family and you wanna eat. That's okay, but taking it off, that's okay. But if you are, I guess, stand talking here and they outside and you are not putting it, you know, I don't know how we can afford that.
I was out Sunday, late Sunday afternoon with my granddaughter and in downtown. And basically I thanked some groups of students who walked by wearing their face coverings because I also want to give some, some real positive enforcement and they seem to appreciate that.
I also don't wanna make sure, I, I wanna make sure that this isn't all put on the students as well because the nighttime life even has not only been students.
Yes, that's true.
Mayor and council, I just wanna make sure that, that we can give appropriate direction to our officers that are working, especially in nights and weekends. Am I, am I hearing a, a desire for increased enforcement? When we have large groups, be it in, in bars or restaurants or at parties, currently we're not being very proactive. We are still in kind of a COVID response mode, which is minimal enforcement throughout the community, whether it's foot patrols downtown or it's traffic stops. We're trying to focus on the, on the more serious events that are, that are, there are incidents that are, that are being called into us. But I'm sensing from this discussion that perhaps you'd want our police department to be a little bit more aggressive with our enforcement? Is that, is that an accurate assessment?
One, one of the questions I have is with the police department, I know that there has been calls already and it, how successful has it been with doing the talk, leaving? Or has that been successful?
Interim Chief Brotherton's on the line here. She'd be better able to answer that question about our interactions.
Great.
I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, council. So it's Denise Brotherton here. We have actually not had a whole lot of complaints. Now, we've been kind of waiting for those to increase as our populations increased. So kind of been waiting to see if we see that happening. But what we've had up to this point is our education has seemed to work. We've had just a couple incidents where, you know, we've kind of had some pushback by a couple individuals, but it seemed to be more of like a mental health issue than it really was about a mask issue. Otherwise, you know, we've had some groups where they just didn't know and, and responded well. Now, we have not been getting complaints about the nighttime at the bars, not saying that's not happening. I'm just saying we're not getting those complaints. I expect again, that will increase. And, you know, as the city manager said, we've kind of been working in that pandemic mode where we have not been so proactive, though we have responded to all complaints and if applicable, have educated. Now, there's some we respond to that everyone's following, you know, what they should be and there's not an issue there. So therefore, we're not taking any type of action or making contact. But it, but if there is, we will. And, you know, we would certainly still, even if we're increasing our presence, you know, our goal is still going to be education first. And obviously, and like you mentioned before, dealing with if there's other behaviors at hand, whether it's disorderly behaviors or toxic behaviors. Sorry, my dog just decided to speak up for us.
Hello?
So anyway, yeah. So any other questions about that, that my dog can answer for us apparently?
Then as I just wanna ask you, is there is any plan when the student arrive with, because they were outside. They don't know about, maybe some of them, they don't know about IOCT. Now they mandating this, the mask requirement. And yes, is there is any plan that there's some police will be around there just handing masks, telling people? Or we going, or the university will tell, you know, the student that IOCT is doing this? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. I, I've been made aware that the university has been sending out education to the students and they have some plans they're working on. Now, we still have the disposable mask, which of course will have the officers have with them when they're out. And, you know, we can also put it on our social media, you know, we, things came out early. But, you know, like you mentioned, we have a lot of students coming to town who may or may not know. And so I think we can certainly support universities' efforts by getting things out on our social media too. I'm not sure about what they have as far as the disposable mask like we do, but we have ours and we have them with the officers.
Yeah. And also I'm thinking about like a plan or anything study Jeff, that like one day plan was ever said will be like around, like they are present and everybody can see them. And just like handing out masks for the people who don't wear masks at that moment and telling them this is now we enforcing this. Or I don't know, like some like present, like an event after the student come. So everybody will know that this is serious. If you don't wear it next time, it would be, you know, you, you will be like punished for it or get.
I think, yeah. I think we can get education out there and get our community outreach assistant Daisy, who's been chomping at the bit to get back involved in the community more. Pandemic has kind of pulled her back too. And, you know, I think we can get creative with, with getting some education out there and letting people know that we also have those disposable masks.
The one, the one type of activity that I, that I'm especially concerned with are these large group gatherings, you know, which I've heard described as super spreading events. And, you know, the, I, I was not aware until relatively recently about the percentage of asymptomatic infection. I believe it's 40%. So you, you can see where you have these large parties. People may become infected. They may be asymptomatic. And yet you're talking about lots of people at one event who spread the infection or are infected at that event, who then spread it throughout the community. So that's the kind of thing, you know, I'm, I'm hearing that a large percentage of the infections come at these super spreading events. And, you know, of course, Iowa City is potentially full of them, both on and off campus. So that's, that's the thing that I'm, I wanted to bring attention to.
I think you're right, John Thomas, because I, I hear there was this event that being held by somebody on a lot. People came, over 40 people came. 10 of them had COVID after that event, like few days after that event. And we don't know who else, but at least we identified 10 people get, you know, as they had system covered and they went and tested and they got COVID. So this is event is really serious. We have to take them seriously. You know, if you wanna have the event, you have really to be serious about mask and social distance and all this.
Yeah, I, I would have heard if we, if the university had done something like this code of conduct that I was seeing on Drake University's, you know, their program. I don't, to my understanding, we don't have such a thing occurring with the University of Iowa. So I think we may have to rely on at least, you know, some level of enforcement because I don't know to what degree the students are aware that their behavior matters, both on campus and off campus in terms of the pandemic. And so we may need to do our education through enforcement.
Yeah, I just wanna weigh in and say, I answered Jeff more directly. I, I do think some more proactive activity is in order. And really pleased to hear Denise, that your department has had success when responding to calls with education being, being the way that those can be handled. So hopefully that even, you know, expanding to more proactive activity, focusing on education still, I think is great. And I really like your idea of having Daisy involved in that. I think that's a really good fit for this kind of, you know, getting out there and helping with that education piece.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to see us focus first on the education piece before we start writing a bunch of tickets. Obviously, if there's other behavior or deliberate unwillingness to, to, you know, go along with wearing the face coverings, and that's a different story. To your point, John, I found this is interesting. I just happened to be scrolling through that article on UNC as I was sitting here and they had a code of conduct. Chapel Hill already requires students to pledge to practice COVID-19 safety measures. And so, while I totally agree, I think it's a great thing to do. Unfortunately, it's, it's not the end all be all. And, and they're calling out the community as well for their, their responsibility as well, you know, not, not just the students. A couple of things I was just thinking of, and I don't know what we're doing or how this would work. And that would be, and the downtown district might be able to help us with this is, and I know they've sent out a lot of like digital posters that businesses could print off about masks. Can we do something like that with landlords and ask them to post them, you know, in the hallways in their apartment buildings and at the entrances and exits that, you know, there is a city and a county wide, you know, face covering mask mandate, you know, when you are out and about and what those rules are. And just, you know, more and more information on preventing the spread of COVID. Obviously, not all the students live on campus, you know, in fact, most don't. But is there a way, a lot of them go onto campus and then come back across Clinton Street? Is there some way of putting a whole bunch of signage on the east side of Clinton Street, facing the campus, reminding them as they come off the campus into downtown or head back to their, their apartments or whatever about those rules? I mean, we can't put them on the campus, but we could, we could make a real cute decoration along Clinton Street that you can't miss as you leave the campus.
We could put up that, along that line, you could use one of our electronic, essentially movable electronic billboards, sort of like you see when you come into Corvale, mask up with a, with a thumbs up at one or two really key points. That would definitely make the point.
Yeah. And I, I talked to Jeff, I think it was yesterday, about maybe doing some of those movable light up signs, definitely on Dubuque Street when people are coming in, students coming in there, maybe on Dodge. So it sounds like council, if we're okay with it, let's kind of give Jeff some direction to kind of work with the university as well as downtown district and other interested parties within the community to put some signage. All right. Anything else? And I do wanna say to interim brother to chief, our interim chief Brotherton, congratulations. Thanks for being in this role. And if I'm not mistaken, you are the first interim chief female.
Yes, I am. And thank you very much. It's, it's been fun.
That is, that is exciting. And so I definitely wanted to acknowledge you and thank you for being in that role.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there is nothing.
May I just, just add one thing? We do have the message boards being deployed. I, I was thinking those would be up today. I don't know if they were installed or not today, but if not, they'll, they'll be deployed shortly. Our streets crew is a little stretched right now, so they may not have got to it today. But we're gonna have one on Dubuque, one on Dodge and one on Melrose, kind of the primary entrances into campus there with that mask up mess, message. So those will be deployed and we can certainly, through the police department and other community stakeholders work on signage. So good, good suggestions.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next agenda or the next item on our agenda, which is continuing the discussion on the resolution of the initial council commitments addressing the Black Lives Matter movement and systemic racism in the wake of the murder of George Floyd by the Minneapolis police and calls for actions from protesters and residents. One of the things that came in the late, late handout is the investigative report contract. And so wanted to definitely spend some time there on that item. And that, of course, came from the resolution that I just mentioned. And I believe that in the resolution, that is item number four, where council had, had a part of that resolution stating that the city manager will give a report by August 1st on the involvement of the Iowa City Police Department in the use of tier, in the use of gas, flashbangs, devices during the protests in Iowa City on June 3rd. Council had decided that we wanted to really seek other, an outside source, the, maybe look at this. And now that is the, the contract is the result of that. So wanted to just open up the conversation. Jeff, certainly you can take us away.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. So in the late handouts was a contract that the city attorney's office had drafted with the OIR group, Office of Independent Review. They are a firm from California that focus exclusively on conducting these types of reviews for the police departments really across the country, but most of their work is in the state of California. We were referred to them through some other communities that have gone through assessments in the past that felt that they did a, a fair job in the investigation and a nice job presenting it. We did talk with a number of other firms as well. Ultimately, all the firms roughly had the same price. It was gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $200 to $250 per hour with a not to exceed amount that we would agree to. So I, I don't think you're gonna find a whole lot difference in cost if you were to look elsewhere. That this firm, we felt would be completely independent from the city. We've never contracted with them before. Really don't see a whole lot of opportunity to contract with them going forward. Maybe we will if we, we get used to their, their services and find there's others that are available to us. But really think this would be a one-time contract with this, with this company and felt that their reputation is one of being very fair and impartial. So I know that was important for the, the community and the council. So that's how we landed on this group. There's not a whole lot of firms that have expertise in this area. You really have to know the law enforcement world to, to really get into these types of complex situations, which you have multi-agency responses. So this is the, the contract. They have signed it. So it's ready for council signature. That's not on your agenda tonight. It's here at your work session so that you can have further discussion. If you wanna see changes to the scope of service, if you wanna go a different direction, now's the, now's the time to start to articulate those thoughts.
My concern was that in, in the information, it gave them three months to, to get the report back to us. And now if we're waiting, you're saying that we won't make the decision tonight. We have to wait till another two weeks till our next meeting. That adds some more time to this. And it was kind of a timely thing that we wanted to have done. Can we change that three months or what can we do about that?
Yeah, we, we discussed that and pretty much every firm had that same two to three month window. I, I don't think that they can speed that up at all. It's just based on their, their workload that they have with their, their staff. All these groups that do this are usually very small firms or individuals. And they may be balancing several contracts at, at one time. So we had that discussion and unfortunately, I think that's, that's just what we'd have to accept with an outside review. They, they've got a lot of homework to do to get started because they're unfamiliar with the community, with the department, with our policies. So there's a lot of a background that they need to do just to get started.
I just think that I have another idea really. I wanna see what the council think about it. The, the main question was who made the call to do that? And now we have to send all this, you know, to write this contract and send it and spend all this money to just tell who made the call. And we know who the made the call and the mayor and And we know who the made the call, and the mayor and I have a chance to watch the video. And it can clearly tell us exactly who made the call, and also if we can just come up with, with the fact, as a city, what happened exactly on that day and, and it to the public. I, I think we can do that, like, internally without going to independent contractors to just tell us that. I, I don't know what you guys think, but the, the mayor can speak further to that, but that what I really believe.
Yeah, so I, I, I would just echo what you just said, Mayor Protem. So, we did watch the video, and it was clear that it was the inner, that it was the State Patrol that was making all the calls for this. So, they, they were the commander. I, I don't know all the terminology that, that happens when there's multifaceted type of entities present, but they were, they were the, the, the head, head in charge of the operations. When I look at the resolutions that we did on, that we did for, on the 16th, we passed and approved those. Of course, number four, I just mentioned, that's where it stated, we stated that we will receive a report by August 1st from the city manager on the Iowa City Public, Iowa City Police Department's involvement in the use of tear gas, flashbangs from the protest. And if, if the, if, if the question really is, and that's what the, the community wants to know is who did it, maybe we, we can wait and put this on next week's agenda, or next, the next agenda, whether we voted up or voted down. We allow time for the community to respond to our discussion tonight. When I look at the resolutions that we have as far as the activities that happened that night, I, I immediately go to number 16 of our resolution that says, you know, prohibit the use, we wrote this, prohibit the use of tear gas, rubber bullets, and flashbangs against peaceful protesters. So, we have been there. So, a, as council, council has made it clear that we're, we're going to prohibit that. There are some more things that are not related to the protests that night in particular, but some other things that do, you know, bear, bear mentioning when it relates to our Iowa City Police Officers. And that is definitely number 11, as well as number 14. 11 talks about expressly banning chokeholds or any maneuver that would cut off oxygen or blood flow. And number 14 talks about the, the officers intervening and stop excessive force by another officer. So, in, in, even though I know we're still talking about what happened on June 3rd, I, I feel that our resolution and where we're having our focus is broader on, on a lot of levels, but when it comes down to the protest, the question really that I got from the community was who made the call? Yes, the, the tear gas happened, the rubber bullets happened. That's something that council came back and said, no, we don't want that to happen again. And so, at least for me personally, I believe that I would, you know, go with Mayor Protem's proposal where we do have something in-house that is presented. Like, pick them up, you know, something, you know, the next one.
Yeah, breaking out, Mayor.
Sorry.
It's frozen. You're frozen.
Okay, keep going. I'll be back.
Okay, and, and you know, also, when I watched the video, I just like, there is many things that we, is on the video that we just have to come with a statement about it, and I think we already did regarding the officer. The question will be from IFR that I received is, who made the call? Who, who did it? Who did the action? And also, they want somebody to come out and say, yes, we did. I was requesting that if we, if the city can reach out to the state to say, yeah, we help you on this, and our resident would like to make sure that you are the one who direct, as a police, Iowa City Police Department to take this action. And if we have somebody say, yeah, I did this, and I think that's it, I don't know. I asked for that letter, and I don't know what the status of it, or if we can do it anyway. And where our police, it was clearly the Iowa City Police Department get the order from the state, and they did use the tear gas, and they, we were very present, no doubt. Iowa City Police Department were there, and a lot of, I saw a lot of officer there. And I guess the city, as the city manager in his, I guess it was press release or something like that, and you, he did admit that, yes. Iowa City Police Department did that. If we have all this fact, and we can prove it, I guess let us, I guess, as the mayor said, wait for next meeting, make it public, and people can just weigh in. If they decide, you know, people can just send us their comment. And if they would like to agree with our decision, not to, you know, just come up, the city have to come up with a statement who did the call. If we receive the letter proving from the state that they did the call, and we will say, yes, we were present. That's not, we are not saying something not true, and we did the tear gas with other, like, local enforcement around the area. And if we can just come up with a statement and do that, I guess problem solved, but if the public think this is, they want to go further, of course, I was the public at the end, but this is my proposal, and I think we just, we can talk about this more on the next council after we receive, you know, public input.
Probably somebody else on council has a better memory than I do, but my recollection was that we've talked about the question of whether we should do an internal or external report a couple of times. And I remember saying, well, maybe we have some information that we could release to the public in the short term, so we get something out quicker. And our agreement was, no, let's not do that because we need to have a complete and independent report. So, I, you know, in, in my business, I feel like we're kind of relitigating an issue we already decided, which is, I, I guess, the only thing that I can identify maybe that's changed is that Mayor and Mayor Protem, you had the opportunity to watch some video. And I think it's, it's, I guess it's good if that changes your mind as to what the appropriate process for disclosure to the public should be, but I think the rest of us on council don't have the benefit of that. And we were responding to, I'll speak for myself, in, in our prior decision-making, I was responding to our understanding from public input at that time that we really did need an independent investigation, not just to who gave the order. I think just based on Iowa State Patrol being the ones holding the line to the interstate, I think we understood that they were the ones who were in command that night. So, I thought we really were looking for a deeper inquiry into how everything went down. You know, I, I've said myself, I don't think policy was violated. The issue is what policy might need to change that we can influence.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you, Laura. I was, I guess I'm just kind of surprised by what I'm hearing tonight because it seems like a, a complete 180 from our previous discussion of the, the city manager and city attorney had, you know, had offered to do, you know, kind of the quote "investigation" or gather the information, and I felt it was, if not unanimous, pretty much a major consent, major consensus of the council that that wasn't going to be acceptable. I think to some council members, as well as we figured it wasn't going to be acceptable to the public to have it done internally. And so, again, I would agree with Laura that I think we pretty much knew who made the call because we knew that the State Patrol was the one in command at that time. And so, it was more, why did it happen? How did it happen? And as Laura has said, what can we learn from looking at it in detail in terms of informing us on policy and practice going forward? So, at this point, I would be in favor of signing the contract, which obviously we can't direct tonight because it has to be on the formal agenda.
We are not, like, really saying that we, we're going to do this way. We're talking about it, this is going to be on the agenda for next time. You still have the chance to vote for it. I get you. Well done. Let me finish. You don't need to say that we turn this everything like upside down, or, or at least Laura said that we have the opportunity towards the video, and that's changes our mind, and you guys can have the same opportunity from between now and the next council. This is an idea, and we still, I'm, I'm just bringing it because I want the public to know about it, and I want the public to lay on this, and let us know on next, you know, council meeting, how, what the direction they want us to take. And I said, I will go wherever the public going to say. But that doesn't, like, prevent me from saying, based on what I see, and all this money that we're going to spend, and now it's okay for this, and when it come to use it for something else, it's not okay. But let us, I'm going to leave it to the public until next time, and we'll see. Whatever the public decide, I will go with it.
I guess the, the one thing that I would say now is that, that in the evening of June 3rd was an enormous catalyst, basically for everything that came afterwards, including our resolution, including a lot of the things that we've been working on up until now, including item four of the, of the resolution that we passed. So, I think we should, we should, at least I'm going to be looking at it through that lens as well because it's, it was the, the culmination of a number of actions by people. And it, I just want to make sure that, that we deal with it thoroughly because it was an incredibly, it was an incredibly important catalyst in the demonstrations that followed and leading, leading up to, leading up to our resolution.
Well, I'm certainly, you know, interested in, in the public, the community's response to this particular contract. In terms of my own involvement on this particular matter, I, I really was deferring to those among the council who were advocating for this, this, this study. My, my personal take is more reflective of what the mayor said, which was that the, the benefit, if you will, of the event was that it triggered a, a number of changes to our policies regarding police behavior. And frankly, you know, now what, what has also changed is, okay, now we're seeing the kind of the financial consequences of, of pursuing this. And I've kind of been inclined to think, well, we, we did benefit, we've, from the event, and that we've changed our policies. And I kind of have that more looking forward inclination myself that, you know, perhaps we can find a better use for the funds that would go toward this contract. But that's just my personal take, and as I said, I'd be interested in the, what, what the community has to say as well.
I, I agree with what John just said, and I'm sitting here thinking that the public and the IFR have all had a chance. We've talked about this and stated that we would look into an independent contractor. So, they've known since that meeting that we talked about this, that that was possibly the plan. So, I, to get any more input from them, I know now we actually have the contract in front of us, but, but they've known this, and if they wanted more of a, let's get this done, and, and let's, somebody from within look into this, they've had that chance. So, I, I'm, I'm almost leaning towards, like, the mayor and Mayor Protem's idea about not doing much more than this. We, we know the details from the video, and as John said, thing, good things, positive things have come out of it. So, what more could come out of it if we do an in-depth, independent investigation that takes three more months? I just can't see that there'd be much more good come out of it.
I mean, I guess what I would say is complete transparency about all the, the event that, the whole evening and things leading up to that. So, I'm not, obviously, we're not making a decision this evening. I just add that we did also in the resolution allocate a million dollars for this whole process. What, if we choose to go through with the, with the, with this contract, then what, and it doesn't mean that $50,000 would be spent either. That's the cap. If we choose to go through with it, in the end, it will, it will come out of that money that we've already allocated to this whole process.
Oh, it's, the more I think about this too, though, the plus side of, of this independent contractor would be having the state, speaking of transparency, having the state be held accountable. If indeed they were the ones that, that called on these actions to take place and, and more or less forced our officers to take part in it, they should be held accountable. They should be made aware of it. That's not acceptable in our community.
As far as the, the state's involvement, I think we've heard from Jeff and potentially Eleanor, where we, their involvement or participation in this study is highly unlikely, even potentially getting a letter from them just to state, yes, they were in, simple, like, check yes or no, were you in command that night? I think that is highly unlikely that we're going to get any of that participation. So, sounds like we're, we're going to defer, well, we're going to have more discussion about this at our next council meeting, which it will be on the agenda, on the, on the formal agenda. And the public, we would ask them to weigh in.
But at least, Mayor, I really would like to request something before now, and that, even though I know that Jeff and Eleanor are saying that they might just, the state might just don't participate on this investigation, I still want the city, requesting the city to send letter asking the state to do this. And even after that, I need, we need to see the letter from them saying that they don't want to participate. I don't care about that, but we, even if they rejected participation, at least as a city, we did our part. You know, and, and I think that, as also I talked to some IFR people, and they said they need to know if the state did it, they need something from the state. And at least we'll say, hey, we sent this letter to the state, and the state rejects it. They said they don't want to participate on it, but we've done our part. We just, you know, don't want to just sit there and assume they are not going to do it. Even though you, you sure from your experience and everything, I understand that, but let us do it. So, we have proof.
I do think, I do think the letter can be expanded that this is, we're internet, you know, we have the option to enter into a contract. So, if council, I mean, if the hope is that the state will be, because, participate, because at this point, all of the information will be potentially coming from the Iowa City, the city of Iowa City for this study. So, is there, are there any thoughts for a letter to go to the state even at this juncture to, to make mention that there will be a, that, that there is potential for a study to be done? And, and wanted to ask for their thoughts on their involvement. And we can clearly ask, you know, one of the things that our community have blatantly asked us to ask you, or have you come out for involvement? So, wanted to get council thoughts there. We only have really about or zero minutes before we need to break.
I, I just wanted to, to jump in and say, what we're, I think the whole universe of information we're talking about is going to be public records. And so, when we're engaging an outside firm, they're going to be doing a whole lot of research and coordination and, you know, compilation and all of that. And, and if, if someone else isn't doing it, then we need to be doing it. We probably are responding already, and the state is probably also responding already to, to public information requests with this information. So, whether or not we do maybe a letter specifically asking it, I think we're entitled to that information. The public is entitled to that information, and it can be obtained. I think a third party, the idea was to have someone independent from the government actors who were there to say, this is how it went down. So, it, it's not that they're going to be creating, you know, new information, but I just think these are, these are public records. And so, I, I just request that if we come back next time and we choose not to enter into a contract for a third party to do it, these are, these are public records. And so I, I just request that if we come back next time and we choose not to enter into a contract for a third party to do it, that we give very clear direction to staff as to what we're expecting to be produced to the public. If it's, if it's just this one video that you're referencing, I don't know, but I just think we're kind of conflating. I don't know, several different issues here. Sorry, I'm rambling.
I don't think right now is the time to decide on a letter. I think we need to decide on whether we're gonna do the contract. If we are, then that's who should be contacting the state. If we decide not to, then we would. And like Laura said, then I think we have to look at what's, you know, what's public record and that sort of thing. So I'm not ready for us to do that. I think we need to decide on our process first before we send the letter.
If the public ask us to, as the state, if you want that to come formal to the city, we can do that. But if the public want us as city to ask the state, we should do it regardless if council, I guess. I don't know, but a council should agree to the public. And this is something that they need to know about it. Since we are core, like part of the cooperation that this it being doing with the state patrol all the time, it is like an agreement. Where whenever we need them, they can help us. And if we, if they need us, we can help them. Yes, part of that agreement, if we send a letter say, yeah, we would like to know on that day who this is. What wrong with that? And what like big on that, you know, that's something like really small to ask.
It does sound like the, the public input is gonna be very valuable next, next meeting. And so I think we have kind of put some fillers out there for what council is interested to hear from the public on this item. And I would encourage people to write us, call us or, and, and come and speak at our meeting during open, open, open times to speak. So anything else on this item before we adjourn for our formal meeting? Hearing none. So we will adjourn until 7:00 PM. So we finished the discussion of the investigation report contract. Do we want to go back there or do we feel we can move to the next item?
The staff has our direction to put that on your next agenda.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure. All right. So then there's, we already, we already went through the agenda. So there's gonna be no clarification items unless there's something somebody wants to say. So if we're making information packet discussions, certainly we can highlight anything that we wanted to talk about from any of the August 6th info packets. So maybe we'll maybe we'll start with any updates and then we'll go into council direction on, on the 8/13 or IP 5 from the August 13th info package. So let's start with info packet August 6th. If there's anything anybody wants to address.
Mayor and council on the naming policy, we are continuing to get emails and inquiries about the renaming of the park that was mentioned earlier. Am I correct that you're gonna be looking to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission to make some recommendations on renaming of facilities? I just wanna make sure we're, we're able to respond to inquiries that, that come in on, on the timing of that decision.
Yeah, I, I, I personally think that we can turn that over to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I also am not opposed if council wanted to take one park and consider it as well. I, the person who's being recommended by everybody, I can't begin to tell you how worthy I believe he is of, of this and is in his neighborhood right off Rundle Street. So he was definitely he, he, he just his history and, and some of the milestones that he made was just remarkable. So personally, I would, I, I feel like council, if we've really wanted to look at that a little more in depth, we certainly could. And that won't disturb anything else with a naming of a park that the Truth and Reconciliation would have, from my personal opinion.
Then I would suggest that we direct staff to move forward with their process based on that naming policy. To look at that and bring us a recommendation.
I agree because we've been hearing from the public for this for now, several meetings. And we just talked about the establishment of the TRC, which isn't going to be until October something. And then by the time they get established and get this on their agenda, it could be even later in the year or early next year before it gets done. And I think the earlier the better that we can get this done. It's as simple as, as the process and naming it and perhaps getting signage. So I would agree, we could go ahead with the process now.
I agree with using the process and having staff bring us a recommendation on it soon and not waiting for the commission on this one.
That sounds good to me.
It is.
All right. Well, we, we need a write-up about Mr. McPherson. He is phenomenal. And he, he was a jokester. So he, very highly intelligent, but he would make you laugh. All right. Moving on, any other items from August 6th? Onto August 13th. Why don't we start with IP 5? And this is just memo from the Assistant City Manager about the Telecommunications Commission reports in the middle.
I just have a question, Jeff. Do we have any timeframe from I'm On in terms of, I know they've got their loop in the fiber installed around the city. So they have their redundancy. We know we've got MediaCom, we've got, who's the other one for internet? Drawn a blank.
CenturyLink.
CenturyLink, thank you. So when I'm on is in, that will give us three. They're going all fiber, which I'm assuming will allow for higher speeds than probably either CenturyLink or MediaCom. So for me, I'm sitting here saying I, it's really hard for me to fathom looking at any kind of a municipal plan when we're going to have three and particularly with I'm On. So do we have any idea from I'm On of their build out plans and, and timeline of hitting different parts of the city? I know they're already in the South District in some areas down there.
Yeah, it's probably been a, a year or more since I last had that conversation with them. And I wanna say it was a, a three to five year community build out. So, you know, they're a few years into that. I would think they're not too far off to, to getting nearly full coverage in the city. Now, I say that without knowing the impact of the storm on their, on their infrastructure. Because they were primarily relying on above-ground utility poles where they could. So particularly the older parts of the community. They would, they would use aerial fiber, which obviously saves a little bit of money. So I, I don't know what impact or delays they may encounter from repairs due to the stuff they've already put up. But yeah, originally it was, it was, it was probably looking at about a five year, I would say.
I guess my reaction to this is the, the council looked at this a number of years ago and some of the numbers that we got back were really, really high and particularly for a city who didn't already have fiber in the ground because they had their own like electrical or, or other utilities that, so had they'd already run their own fiber. I don't really see a lot of prospect for us to move forward with anything. So I think from my perspective, I, with two, two servers already here, another one coming in and building out in the community. I don't necessarily see a purpose for us continuing with the Telecommunications Commission.
I, I just would like to thank the Telecommunications Commission for all the information, you know, that took them quite a while to, you know, research other communities and, and all that. I'd, I'd heard the term, of course, DSL before, but I had no idea what, what a lot of those terms meant or, or what the differences were in, in the different broadband. So I, I would just, whatever our decision is, I, I would just, first of all, like to thank them for, for going to that effort and giving, providing all that information for us.
I just wanna jump in. I think it's very telling that what we received from the Telecommunications Commission didn't include a recommendation that the city pursue municipal broadband. And I think if that was their recommendation, that would be very clear. You know, some of the statistics that they provided about the availability, as far as the speeds, I would say, you know, if, if the information from the FCC is correct. You know, 98.1% of households in our community have access to 100 megabits per second download speed and 10 megabits per second upload speed. And, and I think, you know, full disclosure, I served on this commission for nine years. So including during the time that the, it was before, I guess, the, yeah, when the franchise expired and also during, you know, was involved in the state legislation that, that, that got rid of cities franchising authority, unfortunately was, was cable administrating at that time. So um, I, I do think before we would consider dismissing, disbanding the commission, we need to pay attention to the digital divide that persists in our community. Because fiber or broadband access is not just about is the infrastructure next to your house. Broadband access is about can you afford it? Do you have the technology to connect to it? Is it actually readily available in all of those ways? And I found it very telling that their report included information from former superintendent Merly that the primary issue with students lacking access to broadband during the pandemic was a lack of bandwidth rather than access to technology. And if someone is lacking bandwidth, that, that's probably because they're not paying for that high-speed service that is available to their home. Because it, it doesn't make sense or they're not able to do that. I mean, I think the, the, the cost of those services are definitely an obstacle to many, many members of our community. So I think we should consider that before disbanding the commission and also to, to, to think about not our regulatory authority, but are there things that we could do to, and not, not our pursuit of installing an entire fiber network or a, an entire, you know, wireless mesh network for, for the city that the city would own and operate. But what can we do to assist in, in closing the digital divide? And even facilitating funding opportunities. There's a section of this report that said that grant opportunities exist for either building infrastructure or subsidizing access to newer existing networks. I think that is something that just, you know, maybe we should ask the commission to find out more about and see, you know, the funding that they indicated there, there actually wasn't any that, that they listed out. But I really do think if we could maybe ask them to make a recommendation to us as to if that's appropriate in our community or not. Before we would disband the commission.
I, yeah, I'm in complete agreement, Laura, and you know, that the, the issues of access and affordability. You know, it's been exacerbated by COVID and the fact now that schools are, you know, going virtual. But, you know, I saw, I think in the Washington Post just the other day, it's viewed as a crisis. It's a national crisis. It may not be as you know, significant a crisis as it might be elsewhere, but we, we do have here a classic case of the potential barrier or a real barrier to opportunity and quality of life. So I, you know, whether, whether it's municipal or not, I don't know that that's my main focus is we need to address the issue of universal access at an affordable price. That is, that I think is what, what the council should be focusing on. And if that requires, you know, further conversation, I, I think we need to have that.
I agree with you, John. It's the, that.
So do we need to change our charge to the commission or do you think what we're looking for from them, we can do, ask them to do under their current charge? I guess that would be my question.
I think if you're just, if you're asking for, you know, a little bit more information or investigation into the content that they've already provided, then you don't envision it as a, as a long-term commitment, then I, I think you're fine just going back and asking for that. If you are looking at the prospect of, you know, making, or if you're making that decision to make this a, or to continue this as a permanent city commission, then you're gonna need to actually get into the ordinance and the city code and change the scope. So at this time, it sounds like you, you're just wanting them to pursue a little bit further into the work that they've done. I, I think they're, you're okay moving along in that current framework.
All right. Um, it sounded like we had at least two to three counselors that wanted to go in that direction. And I would certainly be a fourth one to kind of pursue as well. So, and I see not enough yet. So.
Yeah, I would agree too.
All right, great. All right. Any other items from the August 13th info packet? Hearing none. I think unless there is any final council updates or thoughts, now would be the time.
I just would, I'm sorry, on, on the August 13th one, I just wanna point out IP 7. The Iowa College Access Network Careers in Building Trades, Trades brochure. There was a lot of really, really good information in there. And I don't know if there's ways for staff to push that out through our communication systems for people. But there's just a lot of really good information on all the different trades and, and it's late, can't think of the word I want. Yes, thank you. Apprenticeships. Thank you, Janice. And even shows a lot of information on wages and stuff. So if there's a way of publishing that, pushing that information out, I think that would be great.
So we were actually, we included this because we sponsored this publication, the local trades came to us asking if we would, we would help out with this. So I, I think it was maybe a $5,000 contribution or so. And this was developed as a statewide tool, but one of the benefits that we found was that they're actually getting into every high, every high school throughout the state of Iowa and providing these booklets to the, the guidance counselors and, and teachers that are helping students kind of figure out next steps after high school. Which was something that we, we wanted to make sure and promote. But we'll get some extra hard copies that we can distribute around the community. We also have this, this digital version, which I've already shared with some of our economic development partners as well. So we'll continue to look for ways to push that out.
What about translation on any of it? I mean, I don't know what the issues are in terms of these apprenticeship programs, you know, depending on people's language skills. So I don't necessarily know. You know, if you translate it and people don't have the language skills, can they even go into the apprenticeship programs? I don't know enough about those details. But is there benefit to doing some translation on some of this?
Quite, quite. I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's benefit. We'll have to talk with, you know, this isn't a city publication. So we'll have to talk with the our trades contacts, but that's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Going once, twice, and we are done. Good night. Enjoy your evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.